Oh, okay. Thank you. Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to our Board of Commissioners meeting. I want to remind everybody that this is a public meeting and it is being recorded both via video and audio. And if you come to the microphone, please state who you are and where you're from. Any awards, recognitions, or correspondence?
No.
You? Nope. Okay. Acknowledgements of previous minutes, May 20th.
Chairman, I move approval or acknowledgement of the minutes of May 20, 2020.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Additions to the agenda.
There was one. It's number five.
The county antivirus software?
Right.
Okay.
It's not underprinted, but it is on the line.
Yeah, I see it online.
See, I'm up to speed because I've got the real thing right there.
The real thing?
Yeah, the real thing, yeah.
Well, let's go back to awards and recognition.
Give me more ribbon.
Sure you will. Okay. Any public input from anybody who's not on the agenda? Okay. Item number one, Public Works Equipment Purchases List. I do not see Mr. Fellows.
I am on the phone.
Oh, I hear Mr. Fellows. Okay.
[laughing]
I wanted to see him once this morning.
Yeah. Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Fellows, Public Works Director. Annually, the Public Works Department puts together a list of potential equipment purchases for the next year, and we do that in conjunction with our budgeting process. What this does for the Public Works Department is, gives us as much as a two-week advantage on the timeline of getting approvals for equipment. When people are, folks are trying to sell this equipment, it's tough to ask them to hold on to something while we get approval for RFP and go through the process. So what this, this just gives us a better opportunity to not miss good purchasing options that are out there and available to us. The list is quite extensive this year. We do understand and certainly do monitor our budget closely. And we don't, we don't go out, just because it's on here and because we budgeted for the $2 million, that does not mean we're going to spend it. We understand and what our fiscal constraints are based on what's happening with our state highway funds and stuff. So chances are very good that we are not going to see anywhere near the $2 million expenditure this year on our budget line. But this does give us a better opportunity to feel a little more responsible, I feel, in our purchasing capabilities.
Okay. Any questions for Tom? Thomas, some funny things are happening at the state with monies that are being diverted to other uses. I assume that the state highway funds are pretty closely regulated. I mean, there isn't much latitude at the state. I mean, obviously, if people aren't traveling, they aren't, we aren't creating the revenue. But once the revenue is created, it's pretty well destined to where it's supposed to go, isn't it?
Correct. By statute, state highway fund dollars, which is gas tax, vehicle registration, wait-mile tax on trucks, and a few, there are some other things thrown in there, that money has to go to the highways. It can't be diverted to other areas of the budget. So it's relatively protected money.
So it can't even be directed towards Salem bureaucracy and Highway Department? It has to go in by a certain formula into the Oregon's roads?
Correct. Yes. Fifty percent goes to ODOT, 30% goes to counties, and 20% goes to cities. And that's part of the way it's written in law.
Good. Tom, even though it's called the Highway Fund, it applies for, also for county roads that are, people wouldn't normally regard as a highway, and county equipment, is that correct?
Correct. It's anything that supports our county road program. So quite honestly, even our shop facilities and our, you know, some of these things, our maintenance on our shop facilities actually qualifies for use under this program. And that's, the Road Department has been, over the years, been pretty self-sufficient. We've most generally do our own grounds improvements and our own work out here. And those dollars all qualify for that because that's all associated with the maintenance of the road system.
Are you demeaning the value of Yocum Road?
That McAdam, nice McAdam surface out there.
Yeah.
This is the chairman in the matter of authorization of equipment replacement for fiscal year 2020-21. I move adoption of order RD 2020-10.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any further discussion on the matter? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Elections results.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, John.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dan Laney with Umatilla County's Administrative Services. And before you, we have the election results, excuse me, election results for Umatilla County that need to be approved. And if we, there we go. So basically, if you, there's the results for our county. And in November, we'll have a runoff between Dan Doran and Holly Jo Beers. I got something stuck in the back of my throat.
I'd give a drink of my coffee, but I don't think that'd be appropriate for social distancing and all.
Well, I was eating flaxseed.
See? Health food will kill you.
Health food hurts.
I'm telling you. Try a donut next time.
Donuts don't hurt.
Anyway, there they are before you. Just need approval. And we're also on the, down the line, on the next, I think we have the Fire District acceptance, too. It's another order up on there.
I think that's next.
Yeah, I think it's the next one, too.
Okay. So you just need a motion to accept the election results?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll move.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Then on the next one there is the East Umatilla Fire and Rescue District, which passed. And so now, we need a motion to create the Umatilla Fire District, so.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next before you is our liability insurance. With, the only vendor that does the counties and cities is CIS Insurance. And they, with the COVID issue that we're having, created what's called a rapid renewal process. So basically, our insurance was actually renewed on May 15 automatically. And basically, are we accepting that or want to go for somebody else? But there's nobody else out there that provides the liability for the county in Oregon. The, it's a 3% across the board. Everything is, automatically was just increased 3%. So they didn't go and, go and check what our experience rate was and do some mod and modifications. They just did everybody across the state, 3% automatic renewal. So unless there's objection, would just be a motion to accept that.
Mr. Chair, as a member of the CIS Board of Trustees, I'll declare a conflict.
Okay.
I'll move for adoption.
Then I'll second that motion with the conflict. So all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And, let's see here. The next one before you is our antivirus, the current vendor for our antivirus was bought out and has doubled the cost of renewal for the antivirus. So it was basically $4,900, about $5,000. So they've increased it to $10,000. And we've been trying to communicate with them to do some changes, and they've been non-responsive to us. And so instead of signing the renewal with them, we would like to move with their competitor, Sofos Software, and it's for $7740 a year. And that, so it's a little less than what the other one has increased it to.
Is this the one that slaps me on the hand when I click on the wrong website?
One of many, yeah. There you go. Just to give you a little bit more information, too, there's other packages they add on called forensics and watches your network and looks for different things. And those are extra costs to see if somebody's in there doing something weird, in a sense, like a virus that's been let loose and scanning your network. The State, Secretary of State's office is providing us what's called an Albert sensor. And instead of paying the extra cost for us to add, like double that cost for these other pieces to do that, they're providing for us for free because of the November election coming up, and they're planning to continue to do that. So on top of this, we're going to get another layer of protection and nullification if there's some sort of reach into our network that the state is providing for us. So the Secretary of State Office of using some of the, well, I want to say the anti-hacking funds that they received from the federal government.
So just as good, and $2,200 a year less?
Yeah.
Move through.
But it is a little higher than we've been currently paying, though, but less than what we would have to.
Okay. Got a motion on the table?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion of the motions? Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Dan. Property bids. I can't log into it.
All of these were stapled together for some reason. There's three or four of them had a paperclip. Was there some reason?
Can you click on property bids, Melinda? Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't get it to open either.
These are the bids. You have to open them.
I knew that. I was just testing you.
Okay.
You passed.
Nothing on there.
I have to test Doug every once in a while. He's really good. It passes.
The annual auction was held back in May for the foreclosed properties. And at that time, one was sold. Sold over 12 left over that did not sell. And so as the customary practice, the county accepts written bids on the unsold properties for 30 days, which expired January, or Monday, June 1. And we received bids on, I think, all of the properties except for one. And so those are before the board for consideration. We have the amount that they were available for sale at the auction, and legally, the county can go down to 15% of those in accepting any bids.
So in opening these.
And they are, by their paperclip together, the ones that are on.
Right. So if I tell you the name of the property, you can tell me if the bid...
The first one, okay, the first one is the Hermiston area property. There should be one bid on it.
Yep.
And this is a vacant lot that was available for sale at, for $20,290.
And the bid is $3,043.
And that does meet the minimum bid requirement.
And it's the only bid on the...
So if you want to, you can authorize, accept the bid and authorize the sale of that piece of property.
Okay.
Now, was this the same piece of property, or...
No, this is a separate piece of property.
The next one is also in the Hermiston area. This is the house on West Joseph Avenue, and it was available for $87,220.
This is in Hermiston?
I believe so.
What's the address?
Oh.
It was available for what?
The purchase, maybe.
About $87,000.
Purchase, maybe. Purchase, must live at Adams.
No.
The bid is $15,000. It's 1-7-100?
Yes.
So that meets the requirement.
The bid is 15,000.
Okay. And so that is...
Again, this is the only bid we've received on this property?
On that property, yes. And the next one, I believe, is Milton Free Water. This is a house, and I believe there are two bids on this one. Yes. And this was available for $70,260.
How much?
$70,260.
This one was in that packet, so let me look.
That one, I believe, is outside. It may not be, but I believe...
It's what?
It didn't have the number on the outside, but the person indicated an interest in this problem.
It's just the, yeah, this one, right?
This is not $5,200.
It isn't, okay.
There's two bids.
Well, that's the same name.
What?
Never mind.
It doesn't, these are, there's two on $5,200. One at $11,111, and one at $18,100.
So they both meet the minimum, and normally, you go with the highest bid.
Okay. This one, Doug, is on 500, I believe. Does that sound correct?
Okay, that was the one that we weren't sure. It wasn't listed on the outside. Is that correct?
Yeah, on 500.
Here. This was on the first piece of property, and it was lower than the one you previously received.
Okay, over at 202?
Okay, this is, there should be just one on this. This is over in Milton Free Water area. This is a little lot just north of the Broadway building.
And $1510.
And it was available for sale for $9,900. And I believe the same person put bids on for this one and the two adjoining parcels. The next parcel is 207, and the minimum bid was $16,160.
This one is at 2510, 207?
Yes. And then the last one was a larger of the three lots, tax lot 208. It was almost $60,000. These are the three parcels that you just determined you no longer wanted to keep.
This is at 9010.
And the next one, I believe, is our, the Green Elevator.
Which Green Elevator?
It's out.
Where is it?
It's on Elliott Road. Yeah, that's a Green Elevator, and the minimum bid was $750.
For how much?
$750.
It was for sale?
Mm-hmm.
That's the bid.
Okay.
Okay, this one.
If that works.
This is a popular one.
Yes, and this is the Southeast Fires property.
I know.
And there, I think, probably four bids on it.
Wow.
There's what?
And the minimum bid was $112,860.
That was the minimum bid?
Eight sixty, at the sale.
Sale was what?
112860.
This is a, this is a piece of property over.
Yeah.
So that's around $17,000.
What?
As you said, the popular one.
The popular one.
Drew lots of attention.
I think the location would promote lots of attention. I don't think the house would.
It's the one he looks at off of his breakfast patio.
It could be. I'm being nice to him. He's got a sharp object over here. You are going to take that away from him when this is over with, right?
Wow. Okay. We have one at $17,000, one at $40,020, one at, it appears to be $50,001, and one at $45,676.
$50,000 qualifies, doesn't it?
So why don't you verify that that's $50,000, I believe it is.
Yeah, I'd say $50,001.
Okay. I knew that was popular.
It's your last opportunity to, you know, keep it in the inventory.
What?
Let me see, I think $50,001.
You don't have to sell it.
This is not $09,000?
Yes, this is a Stunridge Estates lot, and it was $37,800. And there should be a couple bids on it.
There are two bids.
And this is where?
One at $8,050 and one at $20,001.
$20,050 and $20,001.
No, 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 no. $8,050.
Oh.
And $20,001.
You get that, Doug?
Yes.
This is $1,500?
This, this is a house in Weston.
Is this the house in Weston?
It's the house in Weston.
Oh, good.
And it was available at $39,490.
How many sealed bids were being issued?
Two. That correspond with you? All right, we have one at $6,000 and one at $4,400.
Neither one meets, do they? 20%?
15.
Go 15%.
Yeah, so it'd be $5,923.
Yep, this one meets it.
Does make it.
$6,000.
Okay.
Right?
Yes.
Okay. That's it. We want to award this to somebody?
Okay, I can take it back.
I just want to take it away from them. That's all I want.
So all of those, there are minimum bids on each one. And so if the board wants to, you can approve the, accept the bids and approve the sales of all of those properties.
I'd so move.
One motion.
One motion, because there will be separate orders later to be sent.
At the higher or the qualifying bid?
Yeah, the, yeah.
Yes. I will second.
Got a motion, a second. Any further discussion on that? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Guess we got rid of that house on buyers, Doug.
It's a good amount of money back on the tax.
Won't be the North Annex, the courthouse.
Our Office of Legal Affairs.
Adoption of the 2020-21 budget. Is that Robert, or is that...
Mrs. Simonis.
I was gonna say.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Paul, CFO. We have an approved budget that is for adoption for the 2020-2021 fiscal year. We went through a Budget Committee meeting with members of the public in April, and it was approved then. And I believe you have an order?
Oh, yes, we do. Budget, oh, wait.
Budget order number 2021-01, and I'd move for adoption.
Do we have to have a hearing?
Oh, well, I won't move for adoption. You're not going to read us the budget, are you?
Line by line.
You're gonna read it?
Are we setting a public hearing, or is this the public hearing?
This is the public.
Okay, so we're going to go out of public, or public meeting mode and go into public hearing mode for the 2021 budget?
As I recently said, we had Budget Committee meetings with the public in April, and the budget before you was approved. And it's here for adoption today. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Paul?
Now, I assume that, I continue to assume that at some point in time, August or September, we'll probably revisit this subject.
Certainly, due to circumstances that occur, including the virus and the floods, there are, there are bound to be changes, as there is every year in the budget. However, this is the budget as it was approved in, in April. There will undoubtedly be changes going forward.
Okay. Any questions from the audience? Okay. Seeing none, we'll come out of hearing mode and go back into the public meeting.
Hey, Commissioner, you asked for questions. How about comments?
Okay, let's go back into public hearing mode. Yeah, let's, comment mode.
Thank you very much. Sorry about that. Sheriff Terry Rowan, Sheriff's Office. Just a couple of comments. I just want to again renew some previous multiple requests for additional FTE in our dispatch center. I know that we're in very tough times right now with some uncertainty with COVID. But also, at the same time, I recognize that some additional funding coming from 911 appropriations, as well as, as previously commented on, the, the budget sort of drives the formula by which we charge out to our partner agencies. And so rather than them seeing in this budget, upcoming budget cycle, which we'll have to make some readjustments to, the, our partner agencies are going to actually see a reduction in their, their amount that they would pay for dispatch services. Had we been able to move forward with the two requested positions there, they would have seen a somewhat of an increase, but not a significant increase. And so, so I think in the end, it's going to help the overall budget picture. But I think it's going to be a difficult environment to then try to go back up later on in the fiscal year, if that's the direction we go. You know, we've brought a tremendous amount of funding from outside sources over the years to improve our delivery of services. Our dispatch center is that first-line suit, first-line attack on all issues, all things coming in. They're the, sort of the front line. And quite frankly, we're spending a tremendous amount of resources and overtime where really staffing would be the solution to mitigate that. And so I just, again, wanted to renew that in hopes that if our financial picture does look better as we move forward, then, then maybe these issues can be revisited. The other item is the patrol position, fulfilling the Milton Free Water School District SRO position that we've had. Now, one could argue that they haven't really been involved because the school closures. But in essence, Deputy Parsons has been going up and checking on students, working with the school district to ensure that some of the messaging and some of the information is being conveyed to the students from the school district. And so with that partnership with the superintendent up there, we've been able to continue some dialogue in regards to our, our contract with them. And then there's still some uncertainty on...
I have a question, Terry.
Yes.
I understood that, that the, the district had retained him... I, I understood that, that the, the district had retained him, has continued to retain him because of things that he's doing with the students. Is that correct?
Correct. And so I, I, oh, I want to say probably a month ago, uh, things kind of run together now with everything going on, but, uh, uh, probably a month ago, I had a conversation with Superintendent Duff and, and, uh, his desire to maintain this, this and moving forward, he's already had, he already has money set aside that funds the position. And so, uh, he had a desire to, to maintain that. And I know that Deputy Parsons has been intimately involved with them. Um, up till this point now, he'll shift gears into, uh, regular patrol functions. Um, the other thing is there's, uh, still some uncertainty, uh, with, uh, court security, uh, in regards to, uh, some of the moves that we made during this slowdown, um, and a desire to have at least, uh, sort of a combination of retired folks along with, uh, full-time employees fulfilling, uh, positions here at the courthouse, just to make sure that we, we're getting our screening done and, uh, fulfilling our, uh, statutory requirements to attend to the courts. And so, um, a- again, those are just, uh, some comments that I wanted to make in regards to the budget. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time, Sheriff. Any other questions on that, or?
Well, yeah, when, and I've had some conversations relative to the, the dispatch formula, which troubles me in that, in that I would, we, we can't put charge for people we don't have, but, but I, I wish, at the very least, we could advise when we, when we notify the, the partners that this would be their, their tentative cost for twenty, twenty-one, that we could notify them that it could potentially be subject to change. Can we do that based on, on a revisiting of the budget?
Well, I, and I think, for, for me, I, I would think that the answer is yes. And, and one of the challenges I think the sheriff was referring to is, you know, in years past, I've seen the state legislators rob that nine-on-one fund. Uh, and I want to make sure, before we actually bring two dispatchers on, that that money from the nine-on-one fund is truly there. Uh, I'd hate to be in a position where we hired those bodies, and then the legislators ended up taking that fund away. And then now we'd be, we wouldn't have that funding that we were banking on. Uh, so that's one of the things I think it'd be really important to have, um, th- those talks that you're talking about.
Yeah, I'm not recommending that we, we do it right now because of the uncertainty and, and what's become a pattern, uh, at the state level in the last few months, uh, of diverting funds. But I also think that it, it would be due diligence for us to notify the, the partners that we are, that this matter is under review, and while this is their current, uh, assessment, it could be, it could increase.
My question would be this, that, that the agreements that we have, I believe, are legal agreements, contracts that would need to be modified in order to incorporate that ability to change it. Is that something we could incorporate into contracts? And how, what, what would be our opportunity, Doug, to do that?
Well, these, uh, agreements are established each year, and they have been approved and signed for this year. Um, there is some flexibility in, in that based on costs, but there would have to be some type of amendment if we're going to make substantial changes in the dollar amounts that the, uh, partners would have to be paying.
Just to clarify, when you say this year, you mean the twenty, twenty-one fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay.
We've already done those agreements?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
I do, I, I would imagine that doesn't preclude the opportunity to renegotiate, should there be an increase.
That there is possible.
At the very least, we can notify them.
Yes.
Of the possibility.
Yep. True.
The, the agreements may be based off of the proposal that we made with those higher, those higher dollar amounts.
With those two positions, that's what you mean?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd be interested to see what that was, so. Okay, anything else?
No, are you going to comment on security?
Uh, for the court security, one of the things, you know, we were looking at yesterday, no, Mon- the first, whatever day the first was, Monday? Can't remember. Um, is with the addition of moving the screening station downstairs, um, that's going to require a third, uh, officer like we've talked about in the past. Uh, one of the things is they, especially if there's a big rush at eight AM when the building opens, and another one at one o'clock when the building opens again from lunch. So there is that, that rush, plus the requirement of having a deputy upstairs, uh, in the courtrooms. Uh, so, uh, I, I see where you're going with that, and, uh, I guess we would need a, need a proposal for that expedition, or?
No, I think, first thing what I, I think we should do is, um, we're going to find out very soon what, what's happening with the money that we're due, uh, for modifications that we've had to make. And one of the modifications we've had to make is to, to bring the screening station down to the main floor, uh, in order to assure the health and safety of our employees. And that's been in place ever since we started addressing coronavirus, and it's quite possible that we could get some assistance, uh, in that matter, in terms of reimbursement.
On the, from the CARES Act funds?
Right.
Yeah. So we're still waiting to see how much money we receive from the CARES Act to see how much that would cover that cost, so.
That's my point.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up. Okay, do you have anything else?
I have nothing.
Okay. Let's go out of public hearing mode and come back into the regular public meeting.
I move adopt order number twenty, twenty-one dash oh-one.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Supplemental budgets.
Marie's right behind you, I'm just saying.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, we're in public hearing mode.
Oh, we have to go back to public hearing mode, don't we? Yeah. So back in public hearing mode, sorry.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Paul, CFO, Yamatilla County. Uh, before you today are, um, eleven supplemental budgets. Um, I'll summarize them for you and answer any questions. Um, first, uh, budget order twenty, twenty dash fifty-seven, Human Services, SE sixty-three program, requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of budget. This requires an increase in local revenue of fourteen thousand dollars, an increase in state revenue of ninety-four thousand dollars, an increase in materials and services of ten thousand, five hundred dollars, and an increase in contingency of ninety-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Budget order twenty, twenty dash fifty-eight, Human Services, uh, SE sixty-five IDPF, requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in beginning cash of two thousand, four hundred dollars, and an increase in materials and services of two thousand, four hundred dollars. Uh, next, budget order twenty, twenty dash fifty-nine, Human Services, School-Based Mental Health Program, requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires a increase in local revenue of fourteen hundred dollars and an increase in materials and services of fourteen hundred dollars. Budget order twenty, twenty dash sixty, Human Services, Alcohol, Drug, and Gambling Prevention, requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires a decrease in beginning cash of one hundred, forty-four thousand, four hundred, sixty-eight dollars, an increase in local revenue of sixty-four thousand dollars, an increase in state revenue of seventy-seven thousand, six hundred dollars, an increase in materials and services of eight thousand dollars, and a decrease in transfers of ten thousand, eight hundred, and sixty-eight dollars. Next, budget order twenty, twenty dash sixty-one, Economic Development, uh, requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in state revenue of thirty, thirty-nine thousand dollars and an increase in materials and services of thirty-nine thousand dollars. Budget order twenty, twenty dash sixty-three, The Care Program, requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires a increase in beginning cash of seventy-four thousand dollars, an increase in local revenue of seventy-eight thousand dollars, a decrease in state revenue of ninety-four thousand, three hundred, and thirty-five dollars, an increase in transfers in of twenty-six thousand dollars, and an increase in materials and services of forty-five thousand dollars, and an increase in contingency of thirty-eight thousand, six hundred, sixty-five dollars. Next, budget order twenty, twenty, sixty-seven, BMIP Special Projects, requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in local revenue of five thousand dollars and an increase in materials and services of five thousand dollars. Budget order twenty, twenty dash sixty-nine, General Fund JL Program, requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in local revenue of one hundred thousand dollars, an increase in state revenue of thirty-five thousand dollars, and an increase in materials and services of forty-five thousand dollars. Next, budget order twenty, twenty dash seventy-seven, General Fund Communicable Disease Program, requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in state revenue of two hundred, seventeen thousand, nine hundred, twenty-two dollars, an increase in personnel services of one hundred, ninety-one thousand dollars, and an increase in materials and services of twenty-six thousand, nine hundred, twenty-two dollars. Budget order twenty, twenty dash seventy-eight, General Fund Immunization Program, requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in local revenue of thirty-five hundred dollars, an increase in state revenue of thirty-eight hundred dollars, and an increase in materials and services of seventy-three hundred dollars. And budget order twenty, twenty dash eighty-four, Central Water Project, uh, this requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in transfers in of eight hundred, sixty-one thousand dollars, an increase in materials and services of twenty-six thousand dollars, and an increase in capital outlay of eight hundred, thirty-five thousand dollars. Those are the supplemental budgets before you.
Okay, well, still in public hearing mode, any questions from the Commissioners? Or comments? Any questions or comments from the public? I remembered comments that time, Sheriff. Okay, hearing done, we'll come out of public hearing mode and go into, uh, regular meeting again, and budget transfers, item not on the agenda.
Don't we have action on those?
Action on this.
Oh, yes, let's take action on the, sorry.
Sheriff, move approval of, uh, budget order twenty, twenty dash fifty-seven.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries.
Move approval of budget order twenty, twenty dash fifty-eight.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Move approval of budget order twenty, twenty dash fifty-nine.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Move approval of budget order twenty, twenty dash sixty.
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Move approval of budget order twenty, twenty dash sixty-one.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Move approval of budget order twenty, twenty dash sixty-three.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Move approval of budget order twenty, twenty dash sixty-seven.
Six, second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Move approval of budget order twenty, twenty dash sixty-nine.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Move approval of budget order twenty, twenty dash seventy-seven.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Move approval of budget order twenty, twenty dash seventy-eight.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Move approval of budget order twenty, twenty dash eighty-four.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Okay. Number nine, budget transfers.
What a treat.
Reece Simonis, Assistant Director of Budget and Finance. Let's see. We are going to, um, present, um, budget transfers for your approval, um, this morning. So, beginning with budget order twenty, twenty dash fifty-six, Parks. The Parks Program requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of fifty-five thousand dollars and a decrease in contingency of fifty-five thousand dollars. Budget order twenty, twenty dash sixty-two, Public Works. The Public Works Department requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in capital outlay of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars and a decrease in contingency of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Budget order twenty, twenty dash sixty-four, Community Benefits Program, Wind Farm Distribution. The Wind Farm Distribution Program requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in transfers of eight hundred, sixty-one thousand dollars and a decrease in contingency of eight hundred, sixty-one thousand dollars. Budget order twenty, twenty dash sixty-five, Communication Equipment Reserve Program. The Communication Equipment Reserve Program requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of three thousand dollars and a decrease in contingency of three thousand dollars. Budget order twenty, twenty dash sixty-six, Dispatch Reserve. The Dispatch Reserve Program requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in capital outlay of twenty-two thousand dollars and a decrease in contingency of twenty-two thousand dollars. Budget order twenty, twenty dash sixty-eight, General Fund Board of Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners Program requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in personnel, excuse me, personnel services of three thousand dollars, an increase in materials and services of seventeen thousand dollars, and a decrease in contingency of twenty thousand dollars. Budget order twenty, twenty dash seventy, General Fund Victim Witness Program. The Victim Witness Program requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of fifteen hundred dollars and a decrease in contingency of fifteen hundred dollars. Budget order twenty, twenty dash seventy-one, General Fund Assessor. The Assessor Program requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of forty-three thousand dollars and a decrease in contingency of forty-three thousand dollars. Budget order twenty, twenty dash seventy-two, General Fund Tax Collector. The Tax Collector Program requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of twelve thousand dollars and a decrease in contingency of twelve thousand dollars. Budget order twenty, twenty dash seventy-three, General Fund Administrative Services. The Administrative Services Program requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of fifteen thousand, three hundred, and a decrease in contingency of fifteen thousand, three hundred. Budget order twenty, twenty dash seventy-four, General Fund Records and Archives. The Records and Archives Program requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of fifteen hundred dollars and a decrease in contingency of fifteen hundred dollars. Budget order twenty, twenty dash seventy-five, General Fund Com- Computer Information Services. The Board of, hmm, the Computer Information Services requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of thirty thousand dollars and a decrease in contingency of thirty thousand dollars. Budget order twenty, twenty seventy-six, General Fund Code Enforcement Planning. The Code Enforcement Planning Program requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of five hundred dollars and a decrease in contingency of five hundred dollars. Budget order twenty, twenty seventy-nine, Human Services, SE eighty gamble, gamble prevention. The SE eighty gamble prevention program requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of one thousand dollars and a decrease in contingency of one thousand dollars. Budget order twenty, twenty dash eighty, Community Benefit Plan, ECHO CVP. The ECHO Community Benefit Program requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of twenty-five thousand dollars and a decrease in contingency of twenty-five thousand dollars. Budget order twenty, twenty dash eighty-one, Community Benefit Plan, Aware CVP. The Aware Community Benefit Program requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and a decrease in contingency of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Budget order twenty, twenty dash eighty-two, Community Benefit Plan, Help CVP. The Help Community Benefit Program requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of twenty-four thousand dollars and a decrease in contingency of twenty-four thousand dollars. Budget order twenty, twenty eighty-three, Community Benefit Plan, Eurus CVP. The Eurus Community Benefit Program requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires This requires an increase in materials and services of $27,000, and a decrease in contingency of $27,000. Budget Order 2020-85, General Fund District Attorney Program. The District Attorney Program requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $50,000, and a decrease in contingency of $50,000. Budget Order 2020-86, General Fund Support Enforcement. The Support Enforcement Program requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $6,700, and a decrease in contingency of $6,700. And that is it.
Marie, can you repeat those, please?
I would love to.
I'd love not to, actually.
Our legal counsel explore the feasibility of a consent agenda for budget transfers.
Any questions?
I have none.
No.
Okay.
Are we ready?
We are ready.
We'll let our PA announcer do all the.
Move approval of Budget Order 2020-56.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Move approval of Budget Order 2020-62.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Move approval of Budget Order 2020-64.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Move approval of Budget Order 2020-65.
Second.
65, is that where we're at?
65.
Okay. Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Move approval of Budget Order 2020-66.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Move approval of Budget Order 2020-68.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Move approval of Budget Order 2020-70.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Move approval of Budget Order 2020-71.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Move approval of Budget Order 2020-72.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Move approval of Budget Order 2020-73.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Move approval of Budget Order 2020-74.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Move approval of Budget Order 2020-75.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Move approval of Budget Order 2020-76.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Move approval of Budget Order 2020-79.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Move approval of Budget Order 2020-80.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Move approval of Budget Order 2020-81.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Move approval of Budget Order 2020-82.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Move approval of Budget Order 2020-83.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Move approval of Budget Order 2020-85.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Move approval of Budget Order 2020-86.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 That's the last one?
That's it.
Okay.
Guys, when you retire, we're going to have to find someone with that skill.
Yes.
To do that. Because I don't intend to.
As you said, we can have our legal counsel investigate the consent agenda item.
He doesn't look very enthusiastic.
No, he does not.
Or optimistic. Total lack of optimism.
Or even a basket motion.
Yeah.
And on that note, Livestock District, number 10.
The county received a petition from a number of property owners in the Helix area to form a new livestock district, to be identified as a North County Livestock District. If you go down, you could show like number, keep going to the.
You want the order number?
No, I was going to show you the map, so that way you can get an idea. One more, one more. That's the entire, and then, okay. The last map here, it's page five of the monitor, shows all of the livestock districts currently in Umatilla County. And the proposed one is outlined in red. It goes from Helix to the Cold Springs, down to Pendleton, to the north line of the county. So it does meet the 2,000 acre requirement.
Couple times.
And has quite a bit of people that have signed the petition to form it. The statutes have changed, so you no longer need an election for this. You just set a public hearing, send notice to all of the property owners. And the proposed date for the public hearing is the second board meeting in July.
Okay. The cost of providing the postage to the.
It doesn't, we will ask them to do it. And it's more than that, it's certified mail to all of the property owners.
Still cheap.
Luckily, there are some duplicates, but it will be quite a bit.
So we'll. And the cost is borne by whom again?
We'll start with the county, but we'll request reimbursement.
So we will have to figure out some provision by which we can have the hearing?
Yes. What the proposal is, is in the notice, it'll specify that any, due to COVID-19 attendance will be discouraged. But if you do really want to appear in person, you can make arrangements, so you need to call ahead of time. Otherwise, it'll be done by phone.
Well, it doesn't seem to be any limit on those protesting it, only those who would be in favor. So, side comment.
Are they also able to testify by mail?
Probably not by mail, but.
Letter.
By, they can always, you can always put that in to the record. There are probably maybe one or two property owners that are not really excited about the district. But other than that, there hasn't been much notice of opposition.
Letter. A letter.
Why don't you just get a stone tablet and chisel?
Because you can't put an email into the public record like you can a letter.
I can't print off an email?
Then it becomes a letter.
Touche. Okay. So what was that hearing date again?
I think it's July 15th, July 15th. And I set it for nine o'clock, which would be the regular board meeting time.
So do we need a motion to set that hearing?
Yes. If you just adopt the order, that will initiate the process and set the hearing.
I've already got the motion, second. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Thank you. Looks like another public hearing for fee ordinance amendment, so we'll leave our regular meeting and go back into public hearing mode.
Okay. What's before the board is the annual update to the comprehensive fee ordinance, and the departments were requested to get any changes in. We received one comment, and so there's one proposed change. It's coming from Community Corrections, and they want to increase their work crew fee on the daily rate from $180 to $300.
This requires a hearing to set the date?
No. This is an actual first reading of the ordinance.
And that requires a hearing?
Yes. It's a public hearing.
So do we need to sign?
What's before the board is just a first reading, and any questions or comments on the proposed change, and then setting it for a second reading, which would be proposed to be July 1.
So move.
We need.
We're in hearing mode.
Oh, we're at.
Any questions from the board?
We're getting out.
Questions or comments from the board on this? Okay. Hearing none. How about questions or comments from the public, or the audience? Okay. Hearing none. We can come out of public hearing mode and take action.
I would point out that Mr. Primmer called this morning to see if it was necessary for him to appear in person. I assured him it was not. So I'll move that we set the hearing date and proceed with this.
And what hearing date was suggested?
July 1st.
July 1. I'll second that motion.
Actually, wait a minute. I thought it was July 15th.
No. That was livestock.
That was livestock. Okay, nevermind. Okay. Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
And we did not need to sign that, is that correct?
No.
Okay. Commissioners reports. Commissioner, I'll bring it.
Well, we had the meeting of the Fair Board in Hermiston yesterday, and they have adopted a prototype for proceeding with the livestock auction and show at the state fair. That's, that will be the extent of the state fair this year.
County fair.
County fair.
County fair. Well, may as well be the state fair. It's absolutely as good and large as, almost.
They canceled the state fair.
Did they?
Yeah.
Well, see what they, how they do it. But the proposal is very limited. It'll be static displays will be, will be done, and the judging of static displays will be done. No public access to those, to those displays. It'll be purely showing and judging. On the livestock, there will be the showing and judging of livestock. There'll be a photograph taken of the, of the animal and its handler. That will be brought back later when the auction is held. The auction will be held before both live audience and a online auction opportunity. So if the, in order to limit the attendance, which we really don't know yet what that attendance might be, what might be possible, because we haven't seen the, the actual guidelines passed down for those types of events yet.